Commission for the City of Granbury will now come to order on Monday, September the 11th, at 6:00 PM, Granbury City Hall, City Council Chambers. We would like to tell you that we're still having a few technology problems, so if you do come to the spoke podium to speak at the front there, you will then need to turn the microphone on when you speak and turn it off when you quit speaking. Thank you. Appreciate you guys helping us with that. First item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for Agenda Item B1, Consider Request of Realty Capital Management to Preliminary Plat, a 47.271 acre tract with a Marcus Smith survey, Abstract Number 404. The property of the Lakeview Landing Edition. The property is located southwest at the intersection of East Highway 377 and Overstreet Realty. The exact lot and blocks are shown on your screen in this room. Kira?
Thank you, Chairman. This is your location slide. The site is outlined in teal. It fronts along the lake and the Highway 377 and extends some far distance south, approximately 47 acres in size, and is currently not platted. This is a preliminary plat request for mixed-use development with commercial, multifamily, townhouse, and single-family development for a total of 44 lots. The zoning is a PD and for mixed use with those uses, as I had just mentioned, so that's shown as pink on the zoning map there. And this is the preliminary plat. This is the overall preliminary plat. I outlined it in green. It includes some of the context of other plots that are in the area. The commercial and the multifamily areas are to the north and west of the site. Single-family and townhomes are towards the southern portion. And then these other slides just show the rest of the plat document, and zoomed in, if you will, and all of the plat. It meets our requirements. We do have, those are all the sheets, we do have variances. To my eye requires standard easements, and the city engineer prepared a variance memo in support of the standard easement variance. The site zoning is specific, and it's a unique development. This results in some alternative acceptable utility easement locations. It's a higher density and compact development than what we normally see, and we've got some easements that are in the streets and on parking areas is where this request derives from. Staff is recommending approval of the variances, as well as the preliminary plat. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Can you hear me? Nope.
Should be a light that comes on when it's red, when it's working. There you go.
Okay. I'm Bruce Grantham with Grantham and Associates. We're the engineer and surveyor for the development, and really, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant's representative? Any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to start with on the one variance, please.
Chair, move to approve the variance.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the variance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, entertain a motion, please, Commission, on the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to approve the preliminary plat as presented. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda tonight is Consider Request of Legend's Land Development to Preliminary Plat, 155.09 acre tract of the Joshua Minnetz survey, Abstract 351, of the Legacy Ranch Edition. The property is located northwest of the intersection of Fall Creek Highway and Highway 4, and each one of the lot and blocks that are concerning this preliminary plat are posted on the agenda and on your screens tonight. Also, I want to tell Commission members, this is a preliminary plat that we saw in July, that we approved, but there have been some changes to it, so that is why we're seeing it again, if you're wondering why. Kira?
Thank you. That's right. We did see this in July, and just briefly, this is the site location map outlined in teal is the property. The property is not platted, and they're proposing a preliminary plat. They want a development with commercial, townhouse, zero lot line, and single-family development. As a reminder, much of this site is in the ETJ, so zoning does not apply. However, as we discussed previously, a part of the property is in the city, and staff has prepared conditions that go with this plat, so that at the time, it hits a record plat. Preliminary plat is not a record plat, so they can move forward to the preliminary plat. Final plat is considered a record plat, and the zoning would need to comply with the record plat. So they are considering to move forward at this time with the preliminary plat and come back as a development agreement requirement is a final plat with annexation, and then they would have zoning also. So this is the, I don't know why that's there. Never mind. That's a zoning map, and we don't need that for this project, as I just explained. This shows the overall preliminary plat for the property. It's a little bit hard to see, but there's a little red line that runs through the east side of the project, and that demarcates the city limits lines and is where some of the lots are bisected, as I explained in the prior meeting, and regarding zoning and the city limits and the development agreement. I'd be happy to review that again for you if you need to, but I think we probably remember that. This is the second page of the plat. It shows the larger lots, 7,000 square foot lots there, and then the, this would be the third page, and these are townhome lots. The applicant expanded the townhome lots, I believe, to the next sheet should show most of them, but they'd be to the up and left side where those are at. And then this sheet shows where those are. So that's the north and west side of the property, and this last corner should be the north and east side. And this sheet is the last sheet of the plat and contains all the lines, the calls, and the required information that most plots have. Variances were requested not to provide one entry per 50 lots, so that standard assures a certain degree that people can maneuver through vehicular access and safety through the property. This property is bisected with a significant drainage corridor, and it precludes the ability to provide entries per 50 lots. Except, however, you'll notice on that plat that there are multiple streets interior to the property, and it works just fine. And not to provide five-foot utility easements on side lot lines of townhomes and zero lot lines. So these variances have been reviewed by the DRC Committee that includes safety services, and the city engineer has prepared a memo in support of these requested variances. So they satisfy our safety and other standards through the design of the property. Staff is recommending approval of each of the variances, and we also recommend approval of the preliminary plat with these conditions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and this slide shows your voting options. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. The applicant's representative, Joe LaCroix, is here.
Hello. Good evening, Commission. Madam Chair, Joe LaCroix with Barrett Hampton Brown Engineering, where there are civil engineers engaged on the project. As you stated earlier, this is a preliminary plat that was approved back in July. We've made some minor changes to it, including in the lot lines in the townhome area, as well as reconfigured some of the R7-type plots to patio homes in that area. Other than that, it's the same preliminary plat that was presented and approved by the Commission back in July. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Before, we had about 599 lots. Did we increase in size or just change dividing lines?
We reduced one of the lots in the townhouse areas. They went from basically eight-unit configurations to four-unit configurations, which lost one lot. We revised some of the patio homes, excuse me, from R7 to patio homes, and that picked up about, I think, 12 lots net or so, so we're at the, I think, 610 region.
Okay. Any other questions, Commission members, besides the one I had? Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff?
I just had one question. Did I understand you to say that this will eventually be, it'll be annexed, the entire?
That's correct. There's an agreement for that.
My understanding is they're going to ask for that when they come back at final plat, and that since we don't control annexation, if we approve a final plat, it will be conditional upon council doing the annexation. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay.
It'll be voluntary.
A voluntary annexation. Let's make that very clear nowadays.
That's correct.
So, I think that's no other questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and the first item on the agenda are the two variances that are requested. Do I have a motion on the variances?
Chair, move to approve the variances as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the variances presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second item is to vote on is the preliminary plat requested with the conditions.
Chair, move to approve the preliminary plat with recommended conditions.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the preliminary plat as presented with the stated conditions by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second item is to vote on is the preliminary plat requested with the conditions.
Chair, move to approve the preliminary plat with recommended conditions.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the preliminary plat as presented with the stated conditions by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. The next item on the agenda is B3, Consider Request of Holmire Engineering Incorporated for Special Use Permit to Operate a Car Wash Self-Service in a Light Commercial Zoning District. The property is located east of Liberty Road on East Highway, no, that's not right. That's where we needed to do the correction, right? Okay, so the property is listed on Highway 377. I don't know the exact street, but I'll just tell you it's behind the Kroger fuel station. The, and that's, Kira?
Sorry. There we go. Thank you, ma'am. You're right. This is at 3925 East Highway 377. We had an errant street in our staff report. However, I would like to assure you that we did have a full newspaper ad and letters. Those were correct. The request is for a self-service gas car wash, and this slide shows the site location outlined in teal. It's an unimproved property behind a Kroger gas station and a Starbucks. To the south is a drainage area, and east and west are a little bit of undeveloped properties. It's 1.86 acres in size, and it is currently platted. This is the zoning map. It's owned light commercial. In light commercial, car wash requires a specific use permit, and the request is for a specific use permit. This shows the site plan for the development. You can see kind of that light area in the middle is where the building would be located, and vehicles would stack to the south and wrap around and then exit the building, which then would direct them to a drying area. And it's the drying area where people could self-drive their vehicles. That's what causes it to be a self-service car wash. Let's see. I think that's just a detail sheet that goes with the site plan. It provides information about the size of the site and parking and other pertinent information. These are the elevations for the car wash. The specific use permit criteria that need to be met. Is the use harmonious? It's adjacent to light commercial zoning and commercial uses. It would be compatible and harmonious with those uses. Are the uses that are requested normally associated with the use? Yes, it is. Car wash, self-service use. Is the nature of the use reasonable? It appears to be aligned with the zoning ordinance and city code, and as it operates in alignment with those, the use would be reasonable. Is there impact on the surrounding area that would need to be mitigated? The zoning ordinance and city code provide minimization of any impacts. And are there other measures that would secure and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare? Other measures do not appear warranted. And the zoning ordinance has two criteria, a site plan and a limitation on outdoor lighting for this type of use. We have published in the newspaper on August 26th the notice, and on August 31st, we mailed out 10 letters to real property owners in the area. We've received nothing in response to those letters, neither in favor nor in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending approval, subject to these conditions, that the use permit before the car wash self-service without a timeframe, and that the operations would conform to the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. These are your voting options. If you would like to ask any questions, I'd be happy to do that. Answer your questions, that is.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing, and it's the applicant here. And if so, would you like to speak? All right, so any questions for, no, is this, no. Any questions for staff?
I've got a question, madam. Are car washes here in Granbury recapturing the wastewater?
I'm not sure how that's handled. I don't have an answer for that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Are you the applicant? Yes. If you'd like to come to the podium and turn on the microphone, you can address maybe possibly that question.
Would you please?
State your name and address, please.
Heather Rimmer, 4336 Marsh Ridge, Carrollton, Texas. I'm the developer, cross-development. As far as answering the wastewater question, yes. We have reclaimed tanks that reclaim the water and filter it and reuse it. Uh huh. Is there any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Hall?
Chair, a question for staff, please. Kira, in the zoning ordinance, there's SUPs for self-service car washes and full-service car washes, and the difference is who provides the services. As I read the ordinance, a self-service car wash, the customer provides all the services. So I would think of a car wash where I'd come into an unattended building, and I put coins in a meter, and it turns on the water, and I wash my car myself. This appears to be more of a full-service car wash where the employees provide the services, because unless I vacuum the car, which is an optional step, I would come in and go through the pay gate. The employees would probably scrub the front and the rear of the vehicle, that these car washes don't tend to do real well, and then it's all automatic from that point on. So if the customer never gets out of the car, how is this a self-service car wash?
So, I checked with the applicant, and the dry areas are where customers can dry their vehicles themselves, so that's where the self-service comes into play. I think a technical read of the code could warrant a reexamination and just combine the two uses. There's not that much real difference between the two.
Thank you, Kira.
Any other questions for staff or applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Could I get you to turn that off? Would you mind? Thank you. Appreciate it. With no other questions, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the requested SUP.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the SUP with conditions by Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haves. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is B4, Consider the Request of James Hall for a Specific Use Permit for a Short-Term Rental Residential. The property is addressed at 407 West Torrey. Kira?
I apologize. Thank you. So it's a short-term rental hosted, the applicant requests for two bedrooms. And this is the zoning map showing the site zone, R10. To the west is R7 zoning. It's a little bit of a brighter yellow, and to the east is a little lesser bright toned down color. That's R10. This is a buffer map that we typically provide for you when we showcase the short-term rental requests. There is short-term rental to the west. I think our technology is kind of getting in the way. There's also one to the north of, I think that's Bluff. So there's two in the area close by. This is the site plan showing the house with the driveway on what is the street to the south on your screen, and the sidewalk up to the front door is to the street on the right. So they're providing adequate parking, which is one of the things that we look for. This is the applicant's second SUP request for this particular property. I have not identified any prior conflicts or calls for code compliance or enforcement. However, the SUP had expired in July 5th of this year, so the applicant is not too far out of compliance on his SUP. He's attempting to renew, and this is located within historic compatibility overlay, but there are no changes proposed at this time. And we'll take you, this is actually the floor plan. So this does show only four bedrooms, or two bedrooms, sorry, in the house. The zoning ordinance, specific use permit review, shows that this can operate as short-term rental and be compatible with the neighborhood. It's located in an area where the comprehensive plan recommends for short-term rentals to locate in the community, and that's in the HPO and the HCO, Historic Preservation Districts. Two off-street parking spaces will be provided, as there are two as required for the two And, let's see, these we've really basically gone over. And we did provide notice to surrounding property owners. We received one letter in favor of the request and no letters in opposition. And staff is recommending approval, subject to our standard conditions, that being five-year term for expiration in 2028, subject to conformance with the site plan and the floor plan. And along the north side of the driveway, we're recommending the installation of low-height shrubs to screen the parking headlight sweep, and shall not be more than two bedrooms, and the five, six, and seven are standard requirements that reflect back to the zoning ordinance and city code requirements. So these are your voting options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing, and applicant is here, Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak?
I have a question.
Questions? Council members for the applicant? Mr. Moore? He does, would you please?
I've got one for Kira.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's for Kira.
I think when they do these applications now, they agree to either do the maintenance or have a maintenance contractor on site.
Yes, and that's part of the permitting process, not as part of this SUP, specific use permit is part of the actual short-term rental permit that is administratively handled. We review that when we look at that part of the request.
Okay. Okay. Good deal. Thanks.
Any questions, sir, applicant, or city? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this SUP request, please.
Chair, move to approve the SUP with conditions as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the SUP with the conditions as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is B5, Consider the Request of Glenn Wade for a Specific Use Permit for a Short-Term Rental Residential. The property is addressed as 204 North Brazza Street. Kira?
Thank you. So this, again, this site is outlined in teal on your map, and it's at a dead-end street. When you come up to the site, if you were to head straight north, you would be driving on a access easement that provides access to multiple properties, and we'll show that a little bit later here on the site plan. The property is almost a half an acre in size. It's platted, and the request is a short-term rental for unhoseded four bedrooms. So I'd like to pause there and just remind you that our zoning ordinance has a maximum number of bedrooms at three. It would take a code amendment to change that. So in our staff report, we're recommending three, because that's what our code has as the maximum. And you might ask, well, why would you let an applicant submit for something that the code doesn't allow? Well, if we look at our constitutional protections, a person can ask for something that's not allowed. It's kind of awkward, but it does happen from time to time. This is a zoning map showing the site outlined there, and in that kind of flesh tone, that's a townhouse district, and it also carries historic compatibility overlay. No improvements are proposed at this time. The blue to the west is the central business district. The yellow to the south is R10, and to the east is a PD with a single-family residential. And the site has some lake frontage there as well. This is the buffer map showing in red, short-term rentals nearby. That's the only lots there that are within 600 feet of this site that are short-term rentals. This is the site plan, and you might see that better on your iPad than up on the screen there, but you can see where the Brazza Street dead ends, and then there's parking proposed right there at this little turnaround. And so there's two parking spaces there, and then there is a carport that provides two additional parking spaces. So the other properties would not be blocked by parking. They would still have access to their properties. This is a private access easement, so the city is not involved in their arrangements. That's their private easement. And then the house is there to the northwest side of the site. Staff went out to the site to check for screening of headlight sweep, and there could be some screening existing with shrubs and trees that are on the site today. And there's some flower plantings with large, high-growing flowers. Usually, we require shrubs, but these are pretty substantial flowers. The site plan is a little bit clearer to see. The same one, it's just different density on the lines. Okay, and this is the floor plan that shows the bedrooms. So it's a two-story townhouse. This floor plan shows two bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor. When applicants come in and have the oversized house, usually what they will do is designate one of the extra bedrooms, because if they max out at the three, they'll designate one of the other bedrooms for a separate purpose, such as a playroom or a study or something like this. So that's an option for the applicant to consider if you decide that this would be approved. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the three-bedroom term. The, I'm sorry, these are your findings. The use could be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. This is the second SUP for the site. The prior SUP has expired, and the applicant is seeking to come into compliance with a new SUP. The prior SUPs did allow four bedrooms, however, the prior SUPs expired prior to the current zoning ordinance limit of three bedrooms. So if operated within compliance of the ordinance, it could be harmonious, as other short-term rentals are harmonious in these areas. The activities associated with the requested use are per the zoning ordinance, if limited to three bedrooms, it can, it could be. The nature of the use, is it reasonable? It's located in the HCO, which is a historic district in which the city policies guide to locate these uses in. And the impact on the surrounding areas, is it mitigated? Again, regarding the parking area headlight sweep, appears to be adequate, and these are generally the same findings, just in a different section of your code. On September 1st, we mailed out 18 notices to owners, and we also published in the Hood County News on August 26th. We've received, I need to update that, we received some letters in today. All of the letters that we received were in support, and we have a total of four letters in favor of the proposal, and nothing- and we have a total of four letters in favor of the proposal, and nothing was received in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending approval with the, um, a term of five years until 2028, and required to conform to the site plan and the floor plan, which should be, um, limited to three bedrooms, which is reflected in, uh, number four. Uh, and also the screening required for the headlight sweep. Items five, six, and seven reflect the standards and requirements of the city code and zoning ordinance. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. I'll open the public hearing. Is applicant here, or so would you like to speak?
Excuse me. My name is Glenn Wade, and, um, we live at 204 North Brazza Street. Uh, we purchased the house as an investment property in 2017, uh, applied for and obtained our first SUP that year. It was good for one year. Uh, then we applied for another one for two years, and then again, another one for three years. So we've been operating under, uh, three different SUPs, first one year, two year, and then three year for the last six years. Uh, we moved to, to Canada several years ago during that time, and, um, I didn't, I wasn't aware that my SUP, uh, was about to expire. I came in before the expiration of the third SUP. I was told by the, someone in the zoning department that, uh, or city develop, uh, community development department, that I didn't need to renew that SUP. Um, but we moved back in and established that as our homestead when we came back from Canada. But we're, we purchased another house here in, in Hood County, and we're, once that's complete, we're going to be putting, we'd like to put this back on the market. We rented it all six years, uh, never had a complaint with the community development. No, no one complained. We had a 4.9 rating out of, with 70 reviews on Airbnb and VRBO. Uh, we keep the house maintained. Um, uh, we, we appreciate Cara's recommendation to approve the SUP for three bedrooms, but we've rented it for four bedrooms for six, six years, and we'd like to continue to do that. Um, I mean, if I can get three, I'll take three, but I would rather have four because that's the way we rented it, and that's how people know it. And we have a lot of repeat business, people coming back. In 2021, the house was rented every weekend, um, before, and this was right after COVID, before we moved back into it, every weekend, 125 nights. Uh, we had, uh, 56,000 gross income from that and paid $7,840 to the city for, uh, occupancy tax. So, you know, we, we feel like we're contributing to the community. We'd like to keep doing it. We'd like to have four bedrooms if we could get it.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, Mr. Wade, do you have any questions, staff? I mean, I mean, commission members? Mr. Moore?
My first question is to Cara. Are we even allowed to go to a four-bedroom if that's the way we vote?
We can't, we can't do that because the zoning ordinance does not allow it.
That's what I thought. Okay. Uh, have you already changed on your websites the fact that it's a three-bedroom now versus four?
No, because we're, we're not renting it, we're not trying to rent it now. We're still occupying it as our primary residence.
Okay, but would you be willing to do that?
Would I be willing to?
Change it to a three-bedroom?
I would. I wouldn't like it, but, you know, I've just taken a 25% cut in pay. Would you like that?
I understand. I just, our ordinance has not allowed that.
Yep. Well, can there be a vari, can you apply for a variance for the ordinance?
That was going to be my questions.
That's not an option because these are, um, standards that go with the use, so variances are not allowed for uses.
No grandfather in, grandfathered in?
Not in this situation because the, the last SUP has already expired.
Okay, I guess that's your answer. Uh, so you'd be willing to change those advertised spots to a three-bedroom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your understanding is your last renewal did not have a term limit on it, or you thought it was three years?
You know, uh, it was not clear.
I thought you said one, two, and three.
It was one year, then two year, then three years. And then I came in before it expired, and I asked the person working there who's not working there anymore if I needed to renew it, because I knew it was about to expire. Our property manager, we have a full-time property manager, we have other Airbnbs in Alabama and Mississippi. He told me it was about to expire, so I, because I lived here. I came here and, um, and, and told him that I wanted to file it, and I was told that it wasn't necessary. I'd already, I'd already, uh, been approved for six consecutive years, and that person didn't think I needed to renew. I mean, I was still paying taxes, but the SUP, she said that it was not necessary for me to renew. So I'd like to start recording everything I speak about in that office, but I, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I was misinformed.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant or staff? Mr. Erdman?
Oh, no, I just want to make a motion to approve the SUP subject to conditions as presented.
Okay, let me close the public hearing, and then Mr. Erdman has a motion on the floor to pervert, uh, approve the SUP with the conditions as presented. Do I have a second? Or, just stop for a second. Did anybody have any discussion that they did not get? Uh, okay. So do I have a second? A second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the just, next item on the agenda is B6. I feel like I'm calling bingo tonight. Consider request of Granberry Nissan for, one, a future land use plan amendment from retail office to commercial. Two, a change of zoning from interim holding IH to heavy commercial HC. Three, a specific use permit to allow auto sales used in automobile repair, major and automobile repair minor in heavy commercial zoning district. And four, to preliminary plat, a 7.4 six-acre tract of the Joshua Minette survey. Abstract number 351 is Lot 1, Block 1 of the Granberry Nissan. The property is addressed at 4900 East Highway 377. Cara?
Got it. Okay, so this is your site context. The site is outlined in teal. It's currently undeveloped land. The east, south, and west of the site are also undeveloped, and to the north is an automobile dealership. So the context of this neighborhood is automobile dealerships, um, which are heavy commercial uses, quite like the proposed use. We have , um, four, four requests with this, this particular presentation. Um, the site has a development agreement for, due to the moratorium, and they're proposing onsite sanitary facility. It's currently unplatted, and they're asking to plat. This is the comprehensive plan showing the existing, um, retail office. That's that red color on the site adjacent to the east and to the west. And retail office is exactly what it says. It offers locations for uses that are less intense, that are retail and office in character. The proposal is for commercial, which offers us location that's heavier intensity, um, like the, the proposed auto dealership. You can have auto sales and service types of establishments. Um, it limits general retail, although you can still do some retail in, in that district, or the, in the, that particular comprehensive plan designation. And where's, uh, this color is, is that kind of dusty red to the north where the car dealership is, and a little bit to the south and east, um, or to the, the east and west, sorry. So I, I'm putting in this presentation the considerations for each type of application with that appropriate application. So these are the zoning ordinance considerations for the future land use plan amendment. Um, and these are the answers, um, to the questions that are in full in, in your staff report. So these are summarized. Um, does this contribute to the, the area? Well, it, it would be new development and therefore contribute and add value to the area. The infrastructure will be provided. There's a development in place for this sanitary sewer facility until the, the services become available towards the site. The proposal would, um, be standard with existing, um, development requirements. It would benefit the economic development goals of the community. Um, residential development is not currently adjacent to the property. Um, based on the information provided, the use would be similar to and compatible with the surrounding area and would have a positive contribution. So regarding the zoning change, um, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to work on those colors. Technology is not on my side this evening. That teal is what's outlining the site on this map. It's, it's a bit difficult to see. Current zoning is interim holding, um, which is exactly what it says. It's a holding district until the site is ripe for development. The site is ready for development, and they're proposing heavy commercial. So that green is interim holding. Heavy commercial is the red that you see to the north of 377. Um, the pink color is a PD on the north side of 377, uh, maybe consider that dark pink or hot pink. Um, but it's a PD that also allows the car dealerships. And then the light pink on that map is light commercial, which we heard before is your retail office district. But this district that's proposed is heavy commercial that matches that hot pink and the, the dark red to the north, um, offers commercial uses, wholesale products, auto repair, auto sales. Your zoning ordinance considerations are, um, whether the proposal would provide, um, a fit, and the heavy commercial for this site, um, would do that. It offers greater intensity uses, and those uses to the north are similar to this proposal. Um, the change would support infrastructure and utilities expansion. When, um, the, the sewer plant is available and lines are extended, then they would, um, be ceasing the, the OSSF facility. And it would increase the amount of heavy commercial zoned land available. Um, land in this area is beginning to develop. All of the, the car dealerships have been there for, for a little while, and it would accommodate a new automobile dealership. Um, the SUP request, there's, there are three. One is automobile sales used. The next one is automobile repair major, and automobile repair minor is the third. So these, I've just combined their supplemental standards on the slide for ease of presentation. There are three supplemental standards. One deals with lighting to minimize that. And I guess there's four. I missed a carriage return. Uh, there shall not be used for storage of wrecked vehicles. Um, 13 is, shall be screened from public right-of-way. That's the, the vehicles being stored for repair. And then equipment shall be stored and displayed on an improved hard surface area. So that's like concrete or asphalt. This is the site plan. Outlined in red is the building that is proposed for, for development. The other areas are, are parking and display areas. So I'll give you a second to, to look at that. Access would be provided from 377 at two points, and then the OSSF is towards the south portion of the site, as is a drainage facility. Okay, I'll move on. Um, I did put in a, a, a slide showing landscaping, and so I'll have to speak to that on this site plan. Um, the, the applicant, um, is showing landscaping in the area towards the front where automobile, automobile display spaces are. The ordinance requires landscaping, um, within the customer and employee parking areas, and that has not yet been shown on a, a plan. So staff has a condition associated with this application to require that that landscaping would be provided as required by the zoning ordinance. Okay. So this is the specific use permit, um, section in the zoning ordinance. The criteria, um, again, is the use harmonious and compatible. And the site is located along a highway and it, and across the street from auto sales and service uses. Our activity is normally associated with the requested use. They are. Um, is the nature of the use reasonable? Based on the information presented, it is. And the impact on the surrounding area, is it mitigated? Um, building permit will be required before any construction occurs, and, um, the zoning ordinance will be reviewed to confirm any screening, fencing, or, or other requirements are, are, are met. The plat request, so again, um, site is shown there on your map. Um, it's currently not platted, and they're proposing a one-lot plat. And that's what's shown on this slide. So you can see there, um, the plat includes easements for, um, safety circulation, and other lines represent easements for things like drainage and utilities. And this is the overall sheet, uh, that shows the parent tract, since this is still, um, in a larger, um, property. Now, variance is requested not to provide access in all directions. I'll go back so you can see that access is only being provided towards the 377. Um, and then we have our city engineer's memo. DRC is reviewed, and, uh, the city engineer writes the memos for the, the variances, and we're supporting the variance of requests. Whoops, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry about this. There we are. And we provided public notice. Um, there were only four notices required, and we mailed those on September 1st and published in the newspaper August 26th. Let me just double-check. And we did not have any letters come in in favor nor in opposition to the request. And staff is recommending approval, first, of the future land use plan amendment. Second, to the change of zoning. And then to the SUP with these conditions, um, first regarding the landscaping, and then development being in compliance with the site plan and landscape plan. Um, and then is, except as provided in those conditions, all development to comply with the city code and zoning ordinance. And the, uh, slide here presents your voting options. I'll go to the next slide and just present the, the plat recommendation, um, which staff is recommending approval of the variance request and of the preliminary plat. I'll go back to this slide. I also have a slide for your voting options on the plat. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Open the public hearing. The applicant's representative, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm Bill Baird with Baird Hampton Round. Just a few comments. We have revised the site plan to add landscape islands in the back parking lot. It just didn't get it to Cara in time to get it to you tonight. Uh, we are extending a sanitary sewer line back about 800 feet to the west. We just can't connect to it until the moratorium is lifted. And, uh, oh, there will be no body shop on this property, so there'll be no wrecked vehicle storage on this site.
Any questions for the applicant? So you answered one of my questions. The line is ready when the moratorium's lifted. Then is there any provisions on what happens with the OSSF? Does it?
We'll abandon it.
Just abandon it?
Yeah. We'll, we'll divert our sewage to the public sewer line.
Right.
We will just abandon the septic.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, then I'll close the public hearing. And the first thing we will, uh, vote on is the request to change the future use land plan from retail office to commercial.
I make a motion to approve the future land use plan.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to do that. Can we have a second by Mr. Class? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, opposed, motion carries. The second thing will be on the zoning from interim holding to heavy commercial, request for that.
I move to approve the zoning.
Have a motion to approve the zoning.
Second.
By Mr. Hayes, and a second by Mr. Wa, Mr. Overdeer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. And the next one is the request on, for the SUP.
Chair, I move to approve the SUP with recommended conditions.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the SUP with conditions. A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. On the fourth one, we first need, it says a preliminary plat, but first we need to, uh, vote on the variance, the one variance. Do I have a motion on the variance?
I move to approve the variance.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the variance as presented. Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the last is the request on the preliminary plat.
I move to approve the preliminary plat.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Second.
By Mr. Hayes, and a second by Mr. Overdeer. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. You're welcome. Oh, well, I guess you got it. It's fine. All right. The next item is- The next item is B7. Consider request of Tryon Development Corporation for one, a change of zoning on a 15.147 acre tract of the Myland County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, from planned development PD to residential 7,000 R7. Two, to preliminary plat, a 15.147 acre tract of the Myland County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 23, block 1, lots 1 through 27, block 2, and lots 1 through 15, block through 3, of the Bella Vista Edition. The property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Nettie Backus Road and Loop 567. Kira?
So this is site context. Again, the site is outlined in teal. It's an undeveloped property and across the street is a school. The surrounding properties are also undeveloped. This came in as an application about, well, it's vested, so the moratorium does not apply. I believe this application has been in for about three years or maybe four. It's been quite some time. And as such, there have been a few changes that the applicant's been working through to get to this point for a while and has made some changes to the project. As part of that, you'll notice an unusual condition with the application. That deals with the future land use plan and a need for an amendment. Due to the timing and the construct of the reviews, staff is proposing a condition that the city will come forward with a future land use plan amendment within 90 days, presuming that the proposal for zoning and plating is approved. That's the best way and best interest for customer service. It's been vetted through city attorney and city manager and upper management to verify that they're also comfortable with it. So I wanted to bring that up as we start this application review. So comprehensive plan splits the site in half with retail office towards the north and the current zoning is a PD recognizing that commercial retail office designation. The zoning, which we'll see here in a second, proposes R7 development throughout the whole site, so removes that commercial designation. And that's what we'll be coming back with, presuming that this gets approved. The proper designation on the comprehensive future land use plan map is low density residential. That's what corresponds to the 7,000 square foot R7 district. So again, I just reviewed the zoning. The PD is what's existing and the request is the R7 with continuing the PD with, just with R7, standard R7. No changes to the standards or anything like that. These are your zoning considerations. The proposal, is it consistent with the planned and existing uses in the area? Well, with that future land use plan amendment, it will be. With the existing uses, it's unimproved, but the residential density is planned, so it would be compatible. It would also be compatible with the school. The proposed change would support infrastructure and utilities expansion. The school district may experience additional enrollment due to residential development. The proposal would increase the amount of R7 zoned land available and land in this area is beginning to develop. The proposal would accommodate new single-family residential uses and units and it's not anticipated that other areas would be negatively affected. So this is the preliminary plat. To the north or to the upside of the drawing is Loop 567 and on the right side is Nettie Beckus Road. So that shows a L-shaped street pattern. And this is the second page of the plat, just shows the notes and required signature area, those kinds of things. Public notice was mailed on September 1st to seven property owners and also published on August 6th in the newspaper. We've received one letter in support of this application and nothing in opposition. And staff recommendation on the zoning is recommend for approval with that subject to the future land use plan map being updated. And this is your voting option. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. I'll wait and ask my question. Well, I'll go ahead and ask it. So how long do these get to stay in the queue and still come back and change for the doing? Because that seems like we're going to have a large quantity change on our sewer system, which was our moratorium. So how is that even factored in? Because that retail that were there wouldn't have near this many sewer systems on it.
So as we go through the process, the public works department conducts those reviews and verifies counts for development proposals that have been in the system through the moratorium. And I can't say to how they calculate things, but they have verified and allowed this to move forward based on their information that it is vested and may move forward.
Okay. But the other question, I think I had to make it clear that first, that answers that, if they factored in. But like, just in general, not even maybe specific to this one, but you can have a preliminary plat for three years?
Sure.
And I thought you had to come and renew it, like maybe at least yearly or something? Or am I?
So actually, that goes back to the state legislation that was passed in 2019, which allows them to submit a plat and until it's resolved or carried through, it stays on the books. So we have a drawer of plots that just are.
Okay. So we used to have something that said if you didn't do it, it would be invalid, but now we can't. Okay. Thank you. All right. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jordan Bishop. I'm with Jordan Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the client as his civil engineer and really just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for the applicant's engineer? Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Mr. Haves.
Staff, Kira. In all other zoning cases that I can recall where there's a discrepancy with the current future land use map, staff has always recommended changing the land use map first and has said if the land use map is not changed, the zoning request should be denied. This we seem to be doing in the opposite manner. So I guess a two-part question. Why is this one different from every other one? And what happens if we approve the zoning, but then the future land use application either not submitted or not approved and the zoning is in conflict with future land use map?
So there's some review reasons that this is coming forward this way. We have a plat included and we had a review that absolutely everybody missed it. And so we gave some contemplation as to how we could handle this and felt that this was the best solution for all parties.
But what Mr. Haves brought up can happen, is that we're setting ourselves up for that to happen?
I think that I would question that this is very unique and I'm not aware that it's happened that I'm aware of. We wouldn't want this to become a practice and we want it to be standardized per our normal practice, which is to require it to come in and not move forward.
I guess maybe I'm not hearing well, but maybe you could repeat the reason why it is going this direction?
Sure. So all parties missed that there was a requirement for a future land use plan amendment. The application was advertised for a public hearing. After that, then we discovered the error.
So all parties are aware what needs to happen? Any other questions for staff or the applicant's engineer? If not, I'll thank you, sir. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion first on the zoning request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve with the condition, Mr. Watson, with the condition stated on the screen of our staff. Motion by Mr. Watson to approve the zoning with their condition stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Overdeer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed?
May.
Okay. So we have three. Three. Which if I remember right, is the same as the approval? A tie or not? A tie. Oh, it's me. That rarely happens. Is that correct?
I think Angela has this down, but I prefer to look it up than go with a memory. Okay. So I'm advised that if it's tied, then the chair would vote to break the tie.
Well, I'm just going to clarify that I think it was administrative and hopefully this won't happen this way again. Or whatever happened between the applicant and the city, we'll put that cleared up. So I will vote in favor. So that will be a 4-3. Motion passes. The next item is B8. Consider request of Mannish Romell to one, rezone a portion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the 400 RTH Enterprise Edition from residential 8,400 R8.4 to light commercial. And two, for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store with gas pumps in a light commercial zoning district. The property is addressed as 1100 West Pearl Street. Kira?
Sorry, I need to ask, did we vote on the preliminary plat on that last one?
You are very correct. I'm so sorry. Okay. So I'm going to go back to B7 and open back up the public hearing and any discussion on the preliminary plat? Questions for staff or applicant on the preliminary plat? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the requested preliminary plat, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Watson to approve the preliminary plat as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Class. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody said aye? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. So I'm going to move back to our B8. We'll start reading that again. Consider request of Mannish Romell to one, rezone a portion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the 40th, or whatever it is, Enterprise Edition from residential 8,400 R8.4 to light commercial LC. And two, for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a convenience store with gas pumps in a light commercial zoning district. The property is addressed as 1100 West Pearl. Kira?
Thank you. So this is your site there. It's located just south and east of the city park on the other side of Pearl Street. Nearby is undeveloped land to the east and offices and retail kind of string along Pearl. The site is platted and is just over a half acre in size. This is the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan recommends for retail office And the site is split zoned. You can see the pink represents the light commercial and the bright yellow is R8.4. And outlined in teal is the overall site. So this request is to correct that zoning and bring the entire commercial property into light retail district, which is appropriate for the existing convenience store with gas station or gas pumps. And the zoning considerations from section 2.3D of the zoning ordinance. The proposal would be consistent with planned and existing uses in the area. The proposed change will support infrastructure and utilities expansion. The school district should not experience additional enrollment. It's not a residential use. I think that I copied this slide and with the weight of the technology, I didn't replace it with new information. But the point is, is that it's an existing convenience store and gas station and it's been there a long time. It doesn't appear to negatively impact any of the surrounding area and it should be able to continue in conformance with those requirements of the zoning ordinance. This is just a diagram that shows a more technical distribution of the zoning that's existing on the site. And this is the site plan that shows the location of the building and the gas pumps, which are to the south of the building. The proposal will bring the site into a little better conformance with the zoning and setbacks, except that the items that will remain non-conforming are the convenience store, which is just shy of meeting the code by about six inches on its front setback and its side setback is a little shy by less than four feet. The rear setback, again, is very close to the requirement, but about a foot and a couple inches or four inches off. And then the applicant has submitted a site landscaping plan that's shown here, so they're bringing that closer to the zoning ordinance standards. The SUP requirement requires that the site plan be included and that gasoline or fuel pump islands not be located nearer than 18 feet to the adjacent public street. So all those standards are met. The canopy within 10 feet of the property line and those are in your staff report for Staff provided 16 public notices in the mail on September 1st and in the newspaper on August 26th. And we received one letter in favor of the project and none in opposition of the request. Staff recommends approval of the zone change and also approval of the specific use permit subject to the conditions to allow the convenience store with gas pump use without a term limit and the convenience store and gas pumps shall conform with the site plan and all activities subject to the zoning ordinance and code requirements. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. And the applicant here, who would like to speak?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I'm the representative of the municipal. I'm the civil engineer and I draw those things. And as for city standard and state standards, I need no comment from, you know, I'm ready to answer.
Any questions for the civil engineer? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. I have a speaker card for Thomas Taylor.
I own the property at 1101 West Pearl, which is directly across the street. When I purchased that, 2011 and 12 years ago, this business existed and it has always existed. And I was wondering why any of this had even come up. You've kind of explained that now, but I have absolutely no objection to it.
Letters can be sketchy and the information when they get to you, sorry. All right. So any questions for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the rezoning request.
I make a motion to approve the change of zoning.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item, I mean, the next part of this agenda item is the SUP request. Do we have a motion on the SUP request?
Chair, I move to approve the SUP as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the SUP with the conditions listed.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is B9. Public hearing. Consider request of Sand Hill Land and Cattle Company LLC to one, rezone a 6.12 acre tract of the Marcus Smith Survey, abstract 504, from light commercial LC to planned development PD with a base multifamily PD/MF. And two, preliminary plat, a 6.128 acre tract with the Marcus Smith Survey, abstract 504, as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Sundance on Lake Granbury Edition. The property is located on the, north of the intersection of Crawford Avenue and Harbor Lakes Drive. Kira?
This is your site location context map. The site- The site is outlined in teal. It's an existing unimproved property with frontage onto the lake and Crawford. The neighborhood context to the south is a commercial center with office retail uses. To the west, down the street just a little bit, is a multifamily development. And to the east is multifamily and a hotel. I believe there's office over there also. But before you get to those developments, there is a small portion of undeveloped property. The site is about six acres in size and is unplatted. There's a development agreement on file for OSSF for the moratorium. The comprehensive plan shows high-density residential there in that orangey color, and the site there at the bottom on Crawford Road is part of a right-of-way. So, our land use map doesn't show the right-of-way as carrying a use. That's okay. That's just the way that the site is drawn up. I would suggest that it makes sense that we wouldn't mind high-density residential being incorporated with the rest of the project, which is high-density residential recommended. And this corresponds to the multifamily proposed zoning. The existing zoning on the site is light commercial, which allows for offices and retail types of development. The proposal is not just multifamily, but a planned development district, which gives flexibility in terms of development standard and in trade-off of flexibility of development standards, which are generally decreased, like setbacks are decreased as an example. Then, the application comes with certain features that enhance the quality and provide a higher level of living experience for our multifamily project. This is the development plan. Those little pink boxes are the residential units. There are townhouses that are three to four stories. There's a rooftop element that makes it four stories. They're proposing 58 units in this development, which calculates out to about 9.3 units per acre. The multifamily density base is 18 units per acre. So, their density is well under the multifamily. Now, the project is compact, and as a townhome development would present to be rather compact. This shows the phasing plan. Phase one is outlined by the red line that follows the phase. The pink phase is the phase one, and the little buildings with the green teal color are in phase two. Let me go back to that. I'd like to just point out for you, this is a good slide to show this. There are amenities on the proposal. There's a dock that extends out to the lake, and then next to the dock is an amenity area that's a small clubhouse and a pool, shade areas. And there's a trail that extends for the community, not for the public, but it's a private trail system throughout the community and extends along the lake. And this plan, it's hard to read in this presentation, but there's a line on this setback drawing. It shows setbacks from the streets and all around the site. The setbacks are reduced in the proposal, but are appropriate for the content of the PD as they've proposed with the amenities and the layout works to the city safety standards. We worked a great deal with the applicant on the entry, which is there off of Crawford, sort of in the center of the site, to assure that stacking would be appropriate and people wouldn't, the cars wouldn't stack out into the public right-of-way there on Crawford. So, that is an adequate design. This is a wall and fence exhibit. So, the walls and fences, there'd be some retaining walls as the site slopes down towards the lake, and those are shown in the lower right on this drawing. We've got some stacked rock and board-on-board fences being showed in those diagrams. This is the parking exhibit, just to demonstrate where the parking would be and how the driveways are adequately sized. We have some little depictions of cars parked in garages, and then they could have the stacked cars behind those. There's enough space in the driveway also. This is the open space exhibit. I spoke to the trails. You can see those. Those are the squiggly white lines throughout the green, and then you can see there's the dock facility and the amenities. The amenity center itself zoomed in, showing the location of the pool and building. And this is the landscape plan. It's a little bit hard to read, but the circles in that gray area, if you go back to the green, the plan that showed the green, those are the landscaping places where a landscape would live. And then, this plan shows the circles are trees, and the patterned area would be grass, and it's hard to point out, but there would be shrubs and other ground cover as well. And this has several pages, but it just assures that each portion of the site has some green space areas. These are the elevations showing the front on the bottom elevation. You can see the garages and how the front doors are next to the garages, and then the second story, third story, and the upper elevation. And elevation is the one on top. And then, this is the opposite side. Each of the units would have their own little patio. And this is just a colored exhibit that the applicant provided. This is the amenity center that would be near to the lake. And the floor plan for that. So, on the change of zoning, the zoning ordinance, Section 2.3D, has criteria to consider. The proposal would be consistent with planned and existing uses in the area. There's multifamily nearby. The proposed change would support infrastructure. Again, it looks like I didn't get a chance to update this, but the infrastructure, there's a development agreement that would provide OSSF, the sanitary facility on site, for the use. It would increase the amount of multifamily. That could have some impact on the school district in terms of enrollment. The land in this area is beginning to infill. This would be considered an infill development. Some of the surrounding area is already developed. The proposal would accommodate new multifamily or townhouse development in a multifamily zoning district, and we don't anticipate that there would be negative impacts from this proposal. This is a drawing of the preliminary plat. In fact, this is the first sheet of the preliminary plat, showing the one lot and its outline and particular notes that are required, the signature page with additional notes that are required. A subdivision requests a variance not to provide the full 15-foot utility easement along the lakeshore. So, typically, you don't find utilities lining the lakeshore, so that's a reasonable request, and the city engineer's memo supports that request as does the DRC team. Public notice was sent on September 1st to 16 property owners and also published in the newspaper on August 26th. We have not received anything in favor nor in opposition to the request, and we staff's recommending approval of the zone change subject to the content of the PD application. That's a little bit different phrase from what's in your packet. I had a draft ordinance prepared. Of course, that's required for city council, but we'll get that put into the city council packet. And for the zone change, I guess I have two slides on that. And recommend, these are your voting options, I apologize. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. If the applicant here, and if so, would you like to speak?
Good evening. Trey Strevey, also with Baird Hampton and Brown Engineers. And everybody back here is really the applicant for the project. We brought the architects, the design team, the owners, everybody. I'll tell you, getting this staff recommendation for approval has been a very long process. We've been working on this for well over a year with the city. I'm pretty happy with what we've come up with. So, yes, if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, commission members? Mr. Hayes?
Question for staff. Kira, I just noticed something. If you could go back to the future land use map slide, please. No, other way, please. Well, that's future land use. Okay. Thank you. Never mind. I was confused with the zoning. There's that little funny little triangle down there that apparently is incorporated into this plat. And my error, I was looking at zoning. It's currently zoned heavy commercial. It's obviously not going to be heavy commercial, but it doesn't conflict with the future land use map, so I have no question there. I'm sorry.
No problem. So, this is gated, right, Trace? Okay. So, this really probably isn't designed to you, but I just want to ask, when we're talking about these OSSF, this one's a little bit different than the one we had at Nissan, right? This one's going to have a tank that's going to be pumped and hauled off. Does this go on to our city, or do you have to take it somewhere else?
No, they'll have to take it to a licensed facility for disposal.
Okay.
And our hope is that, you know, this project's going to take a while to build.
Right.
And we're obviously hopeful that as construction wraps up and we're ready to flush toilets, we'll be able to go straight to the sewer system.
Right.
But in the event the timing doesn't work out, yes, ma'am, we've planned for a pump-and-haul tank.
So, this is a general question. It doesn't really have to do with your projects, but on these OSSFs, do we specify a time that once the moratorium is lifted and they're ready to hook on, that they are required to hook on within a certain amount of time? Kira? Or Greg?
Because you repeated that.
Do we have something that goes along with these, when we have these OSSFs that, OSSF, right, that has some kind of timeframe? I mean, people want to probably connect on like they want to, but do we have something that's specified within the time that the moratorium's lifted that you have to abandon your OSSF?
Right. And so, in the agreements, and I would have to pull this one, I don't have it with me, but in most of the agreements that we have, it states that, something to the effect that as such time as the sewer is available, they're required to connect.
So, just, okay. Any other questions besides mine? Mr. Moore?
Well, we thank you for your work. We're excited about the project as well. I noticed some of these buildings reach almost 46-foot high. Are they going to have elevators in them?
Yes, all of them have elevators.
Everyone of them have elevators. Okay. Are they going to be for sale or for lease?
Well, it's a multifamily zoning district, so we're leaving a lot of flexibility into that program. The chances are that these will be sold as condos one day, but again, not really sure until we start getting people interested in either renting or potentially buying.
Right. Okay. And timeframe, you're saying it's going to take a while to build the project?
Well, they wish they were under construction six months ago. So, we're anxious to get the final plat approved, but we are expecting about a 12-month. We've got a lot of site work to do, probably about nine months worth of site work, and then to actually get the first units built and occupied will probably be another nine months to a year after that.
Really? Okay. That's quicker than I thought. Okay. Well, thank you.
So, we did see this a while back, right? I remember the holding tank. What changed since then? I mean, is it?
Well, at one time, we were just ringing the lake with these, what we're calling vertical townhomes, and we had kind of a central condo unit, and we were trying to bring forward a Plattsamiddle that left it open-ended. Maybe we'll do more of the townhomes. Maybe we'll do a big central building, and that just, we couldn't seem to navigate how to get that approved with the zoning change. So, with the PD, we had to have a very specific site plan, and we just kind of had to make a decision. But yes, we've been here before.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to start with. The first on the rezoning request, please.
Shall I move to approve the rezoning?
I have a motion to approve the rezoning as requested. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is the preliminary plat. First, we need to vote on the variance requested, please.
I'll move to approve the variance.
I have a motion to approve the variance by Mr. Hayes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, the last thing, I believe, tonight, is the request for the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat by Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our meeting. Thank you all for coming. Meeting is adjourned.